I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. McCullough, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Seminero, here. Mrs. Hamel. Mr. Kurtz.
Here.
Mr. McCullough, here. Mr. Malachlan.
Here.
Mr. Potts.
Here.
Mr. Shune.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
And Mr. Basil.
Here. Okay, under announcements, are there any edits to the agenda?
Dr., Mr. Basil, I do have one on packet over in the minutes of the former meeting that was, that are going to be approved tonight, I believe on page four, nine, one, five, in the upper right-hand corner. It says, "Mr. Kurtz attended B.C.I.T., which will be meeting March 26, 2013." I'd like to change that to Burke's B.I.T.
Okay.
So noted.
I think that's an easy change.
Yeah, not controversial.
Yep, thank you.
Dr. Dr., I request that you don't put the mic that close because I couldn't understand a word that he said sitting here, maybe clear out there.
Okay.
If you just pivot the mic into the speaker without actually putting it down.
All right, also, any other edits, board members, to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we're also going to have an executive session after this meeting to discuss personnel. Procedures of public participation are the inside blue jacket cover. Having said that, are there any presentations by the public on agenda items at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Basil. We'd like to recognize two individuals tonight. Our first one is Helen Cole for Outstanding Employee Service. Helen is here in the audience. Helen, if you wouldn't mind coming down front here. She's actually here tonight, taking a break to come and get this award. Helen helped us out with the Health and Wellness Expo that was held through the office of Senator Representative Maloney. I'd like to read into the record a letter that he sent to us to honor Helen, and we in turn are honoring Helen here at the board level. Dear Helen, I want to sincerely thank you for your help with our first Health and Wellness Expo at the Daniel Boone Middle School on April 6th. The event is very successful and well-attended by our constituents, and we had over forty vendors and exhibitors with us. Helen, you went above and beyond to help us with the access to the gym and set up and takeout of tables and chairs. You were always cheerful and available with anything we asked for. In my opinion, the Daniel Boone School District is very fortunate to have you. Please contact my office if I can ever be of assistance to you. With best regards, David M. Maloney, State Representative. So, in turn, we at the board level and administrative level would like to acknowledge Helen's service as well, so we have this certificate for you, Helen. Our second recognition, I mentioned it in my superintendent's report at the beginning of the month, Andrea Eckenrode is our, one of our special education staff. She's working, helps Mrs. Mikowski in a role of special education coach. She was one of five nominees for an award called the Annie Sullivan Award, and I'm going to have Mrs. Mikowski approach the microphone, giving you a little bit of background on what the Annie Sullivan Award is about, and actually have her read some of the testimony from some of our parents who also were part of the nomination process, and then we will also present Andrea with a certificate of appreciation. So Shelley, if you would take over for a minute.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. Dr. Rado explained a little bit about the Annie Sullivan Award. It's an award given by all of the I.D.s who participate in it, so everyone has a chance to solicit nominations and then issue the award. Andrea was one of five. Part of the process is I needed to write a one-hundred-and-fifty-word essay in a college institute, plus I was able to invite others to offer their input if they chose to. I know you shared just a little bit of it. Part of my start with the essay was Andrea takes struggling teachers, both novice and veteran, and works miracles with them to assist our students with special education needs. She listens to their concerns, applies various creative teaching techniques, and positively impacts their educational world. Andrea's knowledge makes us vast due to her internal drive, commitment, self-teaching, and personal dedication to the fields of technology, I-Tech applications, reading strategies, disability characteristics, and teaching techniques. Andrea is able to turn her needs and assist staff forward from that point to success. As the Director of Special Education, I am blessed to work with such a wonderful person, educator, staff, mentor, leader, who is a natural teacher, carrying out what she was destined to be. From our High School Guidance Counselor, Andrea is extremely professional, organized, and thorough in her interactions with staff, parents, students, A.T.C. workers, et cetera. She is one-hundred percent committed from start to finish. High School Mathematics Teacher, as a regular education teacher, I have relied on Andrea's knowledge, experience, and insight to discuss specific student concerns, curriculum, course selection and scheduling, and state testing preparations, as well as accommodations and procedures. She has always had a dedicated floor and supported me in my peers to provide the best education for our students. Community Parent, I believe Daniel Boone has a true asset with Andrea. She is amazing on so many levels. She has a wonderful ability to share her knowledge, support and passion for children with special education needs to all that she touches, including administrators, teachers, parents, and the child. She truly strives to understand and incorporate a work of all perspectives. However, the child's success is her mother's. This is very rare in exceptional. From a High School Autistic Support Teacher, Andrea quickly became a curriculum expert, not only for special education, but in our regular education offerings. The curriculum expertise has no walls. Her expertise is district-wide. Andrea is the go-to person when it's questioned, no matter if there's a question on conceptual algebra placement or A.T. statistics testing combinations. She researches and recommends curriculum that would be considered best practice for students in need of replacement instruction in her mediation. Another Guidance Counselor, Andrea always is one to advocate for the best interest and needs of the student. She gives herself and his time tirelessly. Her passion and dedication to her students is readily apparent to those she works with. Her caring and kind personality shines in all she does. The Market School Principal, Andrea has a knowledge base that is exceptional, always willing to help administrators in every high school. She works closely with our special education teachers on instructional strategies. She works with the community to access county services. She works with the Director of Special Education to form a true special education initiative through the D.C. It is my credit to introduce Andrea to you. She is our Special Education Learning Credit.
I would just like to add that it's always a pleasure for me, I'm kind of in the twilight of my career, to see the new talent coming through. I think Andrea is at the other end of that, and I think she has a wonderful career ahead of her. She's already done some very great things, so congratulations on your recognition, Andrea, and thanks for all you do for the district.
All right, moving on to routine approvals. We have a motion to approve the minutes of March 25th and April 8th. A through C. Mr. Sheen, Mr. Kurtz, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if we can make sure that item 8A is moved as amended.
Correct. In a second, okay. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, Mr. McCullough?
Mr. Seminero, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. Malachlan?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shune?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes. Okay, number nine, presentations by board members. We have Secretary Corusbuns?
I have them.
All right, Mr. Kurtz, B.C.I.U.?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Basil. I have not yet received that rundown of the meeting that I always forward to board members. When I receive that, I will forward it as is per my custom, but I will give you a brief rundown of what happened. The Burke's County Intermediate Unit approved increases in rates for early intervention programs, special ed programs, and alternative education, and they will be effective July 1st. Hourly rates for early intervention and special ed programs will rise from one dollars to four dollars. Daily rates for alternative ed will rise from three to eight dollars. The board also voted to accept the retirement of Dr. Bonita Troxell. She was the Director of Professional Development and Curriculum, and that retirement is effective June 27th. And again, when I receive the detailed rundown, I will forward it to board members.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from Mr. Kurtz? Okay, seeing none, Burke's Career and Technology Report, Mr. Wolf.
Yes, the last meeting was held at the West Center on Wednesday, March 26th, the C.D.E. Center. For that meeting, some items of interest were voted to recommend administration to solicit and seal bids for the construction of the New York Road. We've been talking about for the last two years. And the site of the, on Wednesday, this next meeting, we will be awarding, voting to award those contracts. That will be decided to get that underway. The goal is to get the C.D.L. site up and running and operating. So we can start to, cut some money there. The, another item was two students won $25,000 cash grant for the school, B.C.T.C., as the first place in the People's Choice winner for the MedEd Ways to Save Electricity video contest. As part of their reward, obviously they don't get the money, but the, the two students involved got tickets to the Phillies Heat, Red and Phillies, and at which point their video was shown all by the school board, so that was a pretty nice feather to cap for those two. Let's see, the next meeting will be again this Wednesday at the West Center, and the meeting will begin at 7:30.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Wolf? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the legislative report.
Very brief, the property tax bill, W6, still mired down in committee. From what I understand, what I've been reading, and I've asked the people in the audience, it's being purposely stuck in mired-down-in committee, although there's been numerous people from both the Senate and the House asking for it to be brought at least to the floor so that it can be negotiated, it can be at least spoken on, and it has not been done so yet. I don't hold a hope of it being done, so at least this calendar, at least the school board here, we'll see where that goes. There's a lot of outcry for it, but it doesn't seem like it's been heard in comparison.
Yeah, okay, anything else? Okay, any questions from Mr. Sheen? Seeing none, other reports, we have anything from facilities? No?
Mr. Basil, I have a report from the Burke's County Burned Income Tax Bureau meeting. It's short, it was a short meeting. It was, I was very happy to receive a tour of the facilities beforehand to see some of the new equipment they installed. Once the meeting began, we elected Linda Lash of Schuylkill Valley President for the upcoming year. We had some routine approvals, minutes, balance sheets, dispersments, and we also approved a new record retention policy, a record destruction policy, as a matter of fact, that will affect the new documents and the digitization of documents as well as they come into the Bureau. But that was about it that happened.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Revenue enhancement, not here. Unless anybody has, was at the meeting?
They also canceled.
Huh?
They canceled this month.
They canceled this month, okay. We just had a finance committee meeting prior to this meeting. Just pull up my notes real quick. One of the first things we discussed was a new voice-over IP system for the high school and the administration. Apparently, our current phone system is lacking. There's a lot of redundancy in cost being incurred to have people dial out to an outside extension in order to dial back in again to get somebody down the hallway. We have failures with the phones that are in place, and with the administration set to leave the Matthew Brook Building, I believe in 2014, there'd be a cost to transfer all the phone lines and things of that nature to wherever the administration lands. So Mr. Haas has put together a plan and suggested that we update our voice, our phone system in the high school administrative level to voice-over IP. The total cost was about $43,000 to do this. However, he feels that he can cover that under his existing budget. He could do the freeze that we had in place and some other, I guess, assumptions that he had put into his budget last year, being new to the position, there's about $43,000 available in his operating budget. It was recommended by the finance committee that that money actually come out of our capital reserves, and whatever savings are generated by the operating budget, stay in the operating budget instead. But it was apparent from the conversation that we had at the meeting that there's an obvious need to upgrade our phone system, and it looks like the cost avoidance of putting this in place and the savings yielded from, you know, eliminating lots of different phone lines, comes out to, I think, $13,000 in the first year, and then runs about $8,000 a year thereafter, so the upfront cost outlay would be paid off within about five years. So we didn't have an issue with it, and we thought it was a prudent thing to do and to get it done this year. Otherwise, we'd have to wait until 2014.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, so we're gonna-
I'll make a motion to, as you want to frame it, to change the phone system and the ministry to love the voice over IP as recommended by the finance committee.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion or questions?
Yeah, having just gone through this process, what I want, $43,000 sounds like way under your estimate. We put about 120 phones into our building, and by the time you're updating your gateways and the hardware and stuff, and here's the mainframe, that's a lot of cost, plus the startup program.
Maybe you should come up and- Well, let's get Mr. Haas up, and you guys can ask some questions to him directly. Mr. Haas?
Sorry, are there specific questions? Can you just follow down?
Yeah, I've seen, you know, having gone through this process just last year, this time, $43,000 for a system about, I don't know what the size of the system is, you're different, like you have a high user, user license, we're talking about.
System, I believe, we're licensed to around $110, $25,000, somewhere in that range. A lot of it's kind of a brand, we did a lot of shopping around, and you can usually spend six figures on Cisco, which is probably popular, kind of a company out there. And for evaluating some other small vendors, different environment that we're in, I think we needed to have it fit into some place. It was an office facility with 130 employees, kind of dining in and out, so it probably costs a lot more since the bulb of our energy is the classrooms, so we're very little tech, wired a lot, built to a house where we're used. We also don't have any simultaneous calls moving out of the building, so that's probably the biggest difference between school and office. We actually have a 12-BRI circuit, which I own three lines simultaneously that will share with the high school administration, which is based on statistics and all of the technology that I'm working on. And I already have the quotes back, so if I'm in a place of regular, like that, I'll be able to keep pretty much all over, limitations all the way down, so that while we're able to conduct that labor, again, it could easily get significantly better. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Haas. Okay, do we get a roll call vote?
Mr. Kurtz?
Mr. Kurtz?
Mr. Kurtz? Yes.
Is that a yes, acknowledging?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, both yeses.
Okay, and Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. Malachlan?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Seminero?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes. Okay, some other things we talked about in the finance committee, we were reviewing the breakfast and lunch prices, we had Sodexo Pleasant, I think the net-net from that conversation was a little bit more research needed to be done before we could make a recommendation to the board. We looked at the swap valuation to date, right now it's about $1.7 million underwater. We looked at our overall debt to date, right now it's about $90 million. We looked at refinancing the transition house, because that's a line item in our current budget as a way of generating revenue for this coming year. The question came up whether, in fact, we could do such a thing, because there were some questions whether or not that parcel had been annexed as part of the overall stadium project and the property lines eliminated. And I asked Mr. Supers about that when we sat down, and it was his recollection that that was indeed the case. So we are going to need to amend our budget with that $200,000, I think it was, revenue placeholder there, with some other source of income, because we can't refinance that or finance, put financing on that piece, and we couldn't sell it if we wanted to. Otherwise, we have to go back through subdivisions, subdivide that parcel back out, and spend costs and time and whatnot to do that. So for the time being, the $12,500, I think, of revenue that we get from B.C.I.U. for the use of that house is a transition house, we come back in, and the $200,000 that we were going to use to fund our budget deficit goes out, and we'll need to find a replacement from that. At the finance committee, we talked about, again, using fund balance as a placeholder till we further that discussion a little bit further. Speaking of that, we did go over sort of an updated budget worksheet. We'll be providing that to the balance of the board today, tomorrow, so you guys can see that. It has some changes to it regarding some discussions with one of our employment groups. It had some changes in terms of the shuffling that's going on right now with the elimination of certain positions and what's called staff bumping and certifications that are going on, so that's a constantly moving target. I think the net-net I took away from that conversation was when you add back the transition house financing and everything else remains the same, we're still raising taxes to the index, and the cuts that have been discussed to date with the adding, adding back of kindergarten and the extracurricular program, we're looking at about $1.7 million with the fund balance used. And so you'll see that Excel spreadsheet shortly, if not later on tonight. And obviously, when we have the budget workshop, we can talk about whatever other updates there are.
I do have one more question, but I brought this up, Sullivan brought it up during the ready construction. Our current graduation requirements are replaced. State, a student needs 24.65 credits to graduate, of which .33 credits are driver's education. The driver's education position is in the budget to be eliminated.
Right, the high school graduation requirements would need to be amended so that that requirement's no longer in place.
And still 24.65 credit, but that was-
They would be covered by another-
Another elective. Again, that's just a point, a point of quick, we need to do that. Otherwise, going into the next year, the students coming in, or those currently select or scheduled to take that course, they're going to have to find something to fill that hole.
Okay, well, I think our building principals here, you should make an announcement to the kids, the juniors for next year, letting them know that they need to be thinking about that.
You can take it as the sophomore year.
All right, the sophomores.
Freshmen going into sophomore for another third credit.
Okay, that's a good point, thank you for bringing that up. Let's see, a couple of things, we're talking about a formula for cyber charter homeschooled students who are participating in classes or sports offering here on campus, and coming up with a model for the appropriate way to charge for that, that's still in progress. And the board also decided that it was in the best interest of this school district to employ or hire or pay for a five-year, multi-year budget model that's produced by PFM. This is a company that we had met with back in January, they provided us with a presentation, the budget, or, I'm sorry, the business office had since met with them to take a look at their multi-year model. And we came to the conclusion that we could probably build it ourselves, but it would take a good month and a half of the business office's time to do that. And the time and energy expended to produce a model where there could be some, that they're doing it for the first time, and therefore the risk for error may be higher, we'd be better served just paying the $7,500 to get our hands on a basic model that we can use to start. And it's a recommendation from the finance committee that we spend the $7,500 on this model so that we have a multi-year budget going forward. So I guess, I don't know if we need a motion, a vote on a $7,500 expenditure.
Yes.
All right, then I guess we do.
Need a motion for that?
Okay.
I'm sure it's a benefit.
All right, there's a motion, there's a second, any discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, Mr. McCullough?
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. Malachlan?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Seminero?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
And last but not least, we're discussing about, as it pertains to the audit, various
different types of risk that the district may be exposed to in terms of its investments, or just quite simply where we're placing our money. And the net-net of that discussion was we're going to have someone from the, is it P.S.-
D.L.A.F.
P.S.D.L.A.F., which stands for-
Pennsylvania School District Liquid Asset Fund.
Pennsylvania School District Liquid Asset Fund to come to the district and provide us with a presentation on how they invest those monies that they receive from school districts into a C.D. pool, what kind of investment that is, how it operates, are there other alternatives available that we may be looking at, and other ways they may be able to help address our financial needs in terms of streamlining the investment product that we have. So that meeting is tentatively set up actually for August, since we don't have a meeting in July, and next two months might be pretty busy for everybody in terms of their schedules with the voting meetings and budget meetings that will be taking place. So we'll be having that meeting next August. And I think that sums it up, any questions? Okay, seeing none, any other, anything else to report on committees?
Guys, real quick, the T.S.A. group, we've had all the conversations with phones and text messages and everything else, finally came to a close this weekend, they were in Pittsburgh for their competition, and they, according, they took seven trophies and 28 placements over the 60 finalists, but what I think is worthy to note, and again, I'm not trying to play down any of the others, we actually had four teams that came in second place in the entire state. When you think about having been involved in that competition with my son and all, I mean, there is a vast number of people that go to these competitions, you only have the places about three in your division locally, go to the state level, so it's many regions, so there were four teams that came in second place. And I'd like to, if we're, at least knowledge, acknowledge in the future, the 28 placements involved, we could do some type of, sort of, something.
I think it's a good idea.
I was planning to bring them forward for the May report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, buildings and grounds. Dr. Rado? Is there any, we have a motion to approve the Market Street contract as presented by the solicitor. First, second?
Second, but I haven't seen the contract.
Contract was, you know, I thought, the contract was provided to the district administration last week, but I did note, there was one additional revision to that contract.
I haven't seen the one that was provided last week, so.
Neither have I.
Oh, that's my fault.
I reviewed it, it's based on the Governor Mifflin model, but with revisions, so I mean, you can defer it until next month if you want to review the meeting, I mean, review the contract. I did negotiate the contract. The one thing I wanted to point out, which was the revision that was made at the end of the Business Day on Friday, after I had presented this to Market Street, was the term of the agreement is for two years, Market Street's paid 30% of the net revenues obtained from sponsors that they obtained. The district has the ability to terminate for convenience on 60 days' notice at any time. Market Street had previously had a term there that if they were terminated for convenience, that they would continue to receive that 30% of the net revenues on any sponsorship agreement for the remainder of the term of that sponsorship agreement, since they worked to secure that sponsor for the school district. Those sponsorship agreements can run from one to three years. So if they, you know, if- So, if they, you know, by way of example, they secured one at the end of their first year, we decided to terminate, it's a three-year sponsorship agreement, they felt that they deserved to be paid for, you know, paid their commission on the revenues obtained from the district. I had placed a, you know, made a modification to the agreement agreeing to that. Then they came back and I'd limited it to just if we terminated early for convenience, not, and in my, well, my initial proposal was that they would get paid on the commissions we received to the day of termination. That was unacceptable. Then I agreed that if we terminated early, they would get paid on the commissions for the remainder of the term of the sponsorship agreement. They came back and explained that they've devoted a lot of time, you know, harvesting these prospects and that they would want to be paid on the remainder of any term at the termination of the contract. So, if after two years, we just didn't renew this contract and there were remaining terms on sponsorship agreements, they'd still want to be paid. They explained that they continue to service those contracts and not only processing payments and receipts and enforcing payments or collecting the payments, but they also do a lot of extracurricular activities at various school district events like throwing out T-shirts and things that generate interest for the sponsors and their products. So, they, you know, after hearing that explanation, I agreed to put that, that, make that additional modification. So, they would receive to, continue to receive their 30% for the then remaining term of any sponsorship agreements regardless of whether or not it was an early termination of the contract or the termination, or the contract expired per its expiration of its two-year term. Because in any event, they would continue to service those accounts past that two-year term. And that's governed by the separate sponsorship agreement, which is a form that I reviewed and drafted and it's part, it's an exhibit to the broker agreement between the school district and Market Street. So, this is substantially similar. We clarified, that was in, this contract originally originated in Wilson School District. Governor Mifflin used a similar contract. We're basing our contract off of that. The Wilson contract was originally prepared by my firm. I reviewed it. It was a strong, you know, very solid contract. There was one issue with that. When we were presented with the Governor Mifflin as a form by Market Street, there was an issue in there as far as exclusivity in the county that had been removed. It's no, it's not an issue. I did not include that in our contract because they already have existing contracts in the county. So, if there's any additional questions, I could answer those questions. If you feel like you need to review the contract in total, which does include the, you know, the form sponsorship agreement that they'd be required to use with their, you know, with any sponsors obtained under the broker agreement, I would recommend that defer the action until next month.
I just had a couple of questions. So, in terms of this termination, payment is as collected?
As collected.
Okay.
Yeah, no, under the agreement, we don't pay them anything.
They just collect?
Yeah, they get 30% out of the sponsorship payments that they collect.
Right. So, after we've terminated, you know, not for cause or whatever, just for convenience, is there any sort of rider in there that says that they're going to continue to perform or they're just going to stop performing as well?
No, the sponsorship agreement, which is an exhibit to the broker agreement.
Right.
So, they're required to use this form sponsorship agreement under our broker agreement. That's a tri-party agreement.
Right.
That's between the district, the sponsor, and Market Street. So, we, you know, and that obligates them to continue to service our contract. So, they would have that obligation under that separate sponsorship agreement, which we're a party to and we can enforce.
Right.
When I originally changed this to terminate our commissions upon termination, I would, I, I put an additional clause in the sponsorship agreement saying that we would assume their responsibilities under the contracts.
I see.
Since they would get any commission.
Got you.
Now, as part of this, since they're going to continue to receive the commission.
They continue to.
They're also going to continue to provide the service.
I see, okay.
Which at that time, they also maintain the signage?
Correct. The, under the, both our agreement and the sponsorship agreements, they maintain the signage. So, that's their obligation. That's one of the, what's part of the service that they provide. But they explained that there's, so it's maintaining signage, it's collecting the payments.
Right.
But there's also these additional extras that they do that's part of their marketing to the sponsors.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Subers?
Well, again, I mean, I would like to read it, but I'm not going to hold it up, just like the administration did.
Well, let me try to explain that. I, that is, I'll, I'll take the heat on that one. We had looked at this back in March and it had been through the Revenue Enhancement Committee. So, one of the things that we pulled it back for, for further review by Mr. Subers was the exclusivity clause. We were about ready to bring it forward in March and I put the hold on it because I saw that exclusivity with Mifflin and I didn't want to have a, a situation where we were butting up against Mifflin.
Well, I understand that we're still voting on a contract.
Understood.
And a chance to read, but I'm going to.
Do you want to wait until May 30th?
I mean, it's.
We could vote on it to create the hold.
I'm fine. If, if, if Mr. Subers is fine with it, then I, I don't have an issue with it, but, you know, if this was a committee to hold meeting, it would be a broad opponent. Mr. Subers wasn't here to tell us what is done, then I'd, I'd hold it. But I'm, as a second, I'm going to let it go.
Right. Based on those basic business terms, the, the legal language of the agreement's solid. If those business terms are acceptable to you, then I would recommend acceptance.
Does it tie our hands if we want to bring a banner to the school?
They had, they are the exclusive broker for sponsorship activities in the school district.
What does it do with such as the American Red Cross and blood rods and stuff, is it not profit, does it?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't affect that type of activity.
How about the flash rings and, I mean, I know I'm going down a little bit, but we get people coming in, you know, the company comes in for flash rings and they hang signs and things up for that.
Is there, is there a, an existing vendor list that's excluded from the contract?
There is not an exclusion for existing vendors only this contract. If you want that, that would need to be incorporated in.
I mean, wouldn't that not violate it if we had a, the ring company come in and put signs up and everything?
Well, I think the, the ring companies are coming in to sell that specific product. This is just general advertising revenue.
They're not paying us for the ring advertising.
Correct. That's really just the solicit sales for the ring, which the students aren't obligated to buy.
I know, I'd like to make sure.
Right.
Those are the only two I can think of, either red or black.
I'd prefer waiting until next month after we got a chance to review the contract. I think it's important that we read any contract before we vote on it.
I disagree. Cardway.
Yeah, I want to get this moved. Those two exceptions are in there.
Why don't we approve it with the caveat that Mr. Subers clarified the issue that we, we can still bring in nonprofit banners into the school district? For existing ones.
And, and excluding any existing vendors? We have existing vendors that are advertising in addition.
I mean, if we've got existing vendors that we already have an advertising relationship with, then I would think that they would be excluded from the list. I don't, I'm not, it's not.
We have sold, just for, we have sold a couple of banners for down in the stadium.
Yeah, it's, it's not clear to me that, I mean, it's not a lot of money. It's what, 500 bucks or something like that for a banner, but it's not clear.
Those are, those are local people.
And we did those under our policy.
Yeah, we did.
However, I would say that if, for example, Market Street were to go to a local business that currently had advertisers in the past and was able to increase their advertising or whatever sponsorship within the district, they should get compensated for any increase above and beyond what they've previously contributed.
Having seconded, I, I'm with Mr. Scherraro with the caveat that as long as Mr. Subers can get existing vendors and/or list of people that are currently with us.
And nonprofits.
And nonprofits, then I'm fine with that.
Those banners existing right now, are they yearly? When will they run out?
It's really a mood issue because if they, if they've advertised us previously, they'd be excluded, excluded from the contract.
Well, obviously, if, if, if they say that space is now, except for 500, it's going to be 1,000, but that lease isn't up on that banner, that could be.
We still have to honor the lease.
But maybe not in that position.
I'd have to research that goes through the athletic department.
Yeah, we're already talking handfuls, so if we put them on an exclusion list, not much sure Market Street's going to walk away from this deal.
No, no, I think they're.
No.
Okay, any other comments from board members? Okay, can we get a roll call vote?
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Seminero?
Yes.
Mr. Kurz?
I'm staying.
Mr. McCullough, yes, and Mr. Basil?
Yes.
A motion passed.
Okay, moving on to financial approvals. We have a motion for.
Motion for A through F?
A through F.
Wait, he has the document.
He has the document.
Based on.
Yeah, she'll give, she'll give him a document.
She'll have to, she'll hand it to him. He's got to fill it out.
He has to do that on his own.
He has to fill that out. Right. A through F. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Second, Mr. Sheen, second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none?
Mr. Potts? Mr. Sheen? Mr. Wolf? Mr. Seminero?
Yes.
Mr. Kurz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin, yes. Mr. Wolf, uh, Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mr. Kurz.
Okay, moving on to personnel approvals.
12A through E?
Second. Second.
I think Mr. Seminero did.
I think.
Yeah, Mr. Seminero, second. Do you want to do A through E or do you want to amend?
We don't have, we don't, we don't need to worry about those.
Oh, all right, fabulous. Okay, any comment? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have 12A through E with Mr. Sheen and Mr. Seminero seconding it. Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Seminero?
Yes.
Mr. Kurz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Moving on to programs, we have a motion for.
13A through D.
A through D. We have a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have motion A through D, Mr. Sheen and Mr. McLaughlin second. And Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Seminero?
Yes.
Mr. Kurz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great. Moving on to 14, policy.
14A through Q need approval, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Motion for A through Q, second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
I have a motion, excuse me, 14A through Q, Mr. Sheen and Mr. Wolf second. Mr. Seminero?
Yes.
Mr. Kurz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin, yes. Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, let's see, here's scrolling down. 15, anything on the transportation?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. 16, any old business?
None from the administration.
Okay, new business? We have on here public documents. This was something that Mr. Kurz brought up to me. I thought it was relevant and warranted some discussion at this time. The idea was, on our current website, we do have a lot of documents that are available to the public for their review, be it our budget, our working papers.
Contracts.
Contracts with the teachers or other third parties. There are minutes. However, some of these documents are difficult to locate. They're under different tabs and different parts of the website, so you have to go searching for them. And the idea was, was there a place where we could put, let's say, a right-to-know tab on the website and on that tab, when you hit that, you clicked on that one, you'd have links to all the various pieces of public information, just make it easier for the public.
I call right-to-know because then you run into why didn't you file a document right-to-know? But I would not have a problem calling a public document place and just everything hyperlinked where we normally have them now.
Right.
And make it much easier for them. You say, you know, teachers' conference, Joseph Folders' contracts, if the notes of the teachers, if you want to go to budget, there's a folder says budget with the address. It'd be the easiest way to just go public documents.
Yeah. You know, you can add, look at all the audits.
Not adding a second document, you're just adding the link.
Correct, correct.
It exists.
That's absolutely correct. Okay. Any other people, any comments on that or thoughts?
Make it easier for us sometimes, too. If we go to the same link, it'll make it easier to find.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, great. So, if Mr. Haas, down there? Yeah, okay, if he can get to work on that, that'd be great. 18, sorry.
Any other new activities or anything to tell us about the activities of the foundation?
As a matter of fact, I was at the foundation meeting the other night and they're working right now to get the EIT, get qualified for the EIT program. One of the things that they've asked from the administration are narratives for programs that they could submit to PDE, I suppose is the one that approves the EIT.
Yes.
And so, they've received, I think, the narrative from the high school and they're, and they're trying to now modify those narratives so that they're quote-unquote acceptable by PDE. And my understanding is that Ms. Conlon's got some other meetings with some of the other building principals to collect their narratives and get those submitted as well. I think what they've agreed to is that they need to do sort of a two-step roadshow, so to speak, so step one would be to go around to local businesses or the public at large and sort of explain what EITC is and why it's a benefit to businesses to, if they're going to pay their taxes, instead of giving it to the IRS or to the state, give it to our school instead. So, they understand what it is that the EITC does and how it benefits them. And then when we have, once we've qualified for the EITC, to do the second roadshow and kind of go back then to those businesses, say, okay, we're set up and ready to go, please make your donation. And they do have a couple of events planned for.
May 30th.
For the coming year, so May 30th, they have a.
Meet and greet.
It's kind of a meet and greet for the executive director. It's kind of a meet and greet for the executive director, they're sending out invitations for that.
Actually, Mr. Basil, in that point there, you just recently mentioned, not only have we done it at the board, that Stephanie Conlon is the executive director.
Did we not mention that at the board level?
I think it kind of filtered down, but I don't know that we made a formal announcement.
Yeah, so the foundation, uh, officially hired Stephanie Conlon as the executive director, um, and she hit the ground running. They had a press release that went into, I believe, the Reading Eagle and, and whatnot.
There's an article in today again.
Exactly, that is paper.
Yeah, so it's, uh, I think it's great news, she's got a lot of good ideas for getting the, um, foundation up and running and lots of different events. Um, I think the gist of the conversation at the foundation meeting was, this first year, just to sort of get them, you know, get their name out there and get, um, their feet underneath them. They're going to have, um, a series of smaller events to generate interest and enthusiasm in the foundation and start raising funds. Um, but the consensus was, in the long term, the way these foundations are very successful is to have one signature event a year that everybody can kind of rally around and, uh, really generate, um, funds. So, um, the, the second event that they're planning is for October, around Alumni Weekend, to have a.
Homecoming.
Uh, yeah, homecoming.
A homecoming event.
Alumni. Alumni Weekend, all right.
A homecoming event.
Homecoming, uh, day where, you know, hopefully they're going to have some invitation to alumni to participate in this event as well. And again, generate some more interest in, um, in the school and contributing, uh, funds to the, uh, to the foundation. So, to the best of their ability, they, um, they're going to get their names out and get, um, to different events, to hand out flyers, so people are aware of who they are and what they're doing. Uh, I asked Stephanie to start attending our meetings, probably the voting meetings going forward, so she can stand up and answer your questions directly as to what it is that she's planning on doing and how things are going and can answer your questions more specifically. Okay?
I also would like to, uh, add that I have, now that she's, wanted to give her a, a week or two to get used to being in this new position, uh, she and I are going to be establishing a, a standing monthly meeting, since we have a lot in common in terms of she works for a board and so do I, so I would like to share with her, you know, what we're looking at at the district level, and she and I will actually be having our first meeting next Monday.
It, it was my understanding that Mr. New neglected to fill out some paperwork that needs to get filled out, he took a little step backwards, is that accurate?
Uh, I wouldn't say it, there was some miscommunication of some tasks that somebody needed to do, I don't know that he would have been the one to do it, but there was some breakdown in the communication, so.
He's the guy leading the charge, so.
Yeah, we, you know, we're, we're working on that from, and Mr. Basil and I will be having some conversations with Mr. New about that. I, I think.
Is it, whatever the issue is, is it resolved?
No, it's not resolved, so, um, some paperwork needed to be filed with the IRS, it wasn't done, um, this new board got notification of that.
They have refiled.
And they've refiled, they've got Fox Rothschild involved to help them with this process, it's being expedited, um, I think they're just waiting now for acknowledgement from the IRS that they've received all the paperwork that they need.
Yes, the application has.
And as soon as they receive that, they're going down to Jim Gerlach's office to see if he can't push things through a little bit faster, so if they do get everything done within the timeline, uh, required for, um, being registered for EITC this year.
And Mr. New has been proud of, like, his pleasure.
Oh, I think he's, it's been made very clear to him, um, that the foundation for sure, and, and Dr. Otto's had a conversation with him, that, uh, they weren't pleased with how this turned out. And, um, you know, I think what we're going to do is Dr. Otto and I are going to have a sit-down with him, uh, with his contract in front of us and have a discussion.
Was there a financial impact of getting Fox Rothschild involved that?
No, actually, the attorney for Fox Rothschild is doing this pro bono.
Okay, good, because if it wasn't, it should be taken off his.
Agreed.
Does that mean you're taking it where you're going?
So, everybody's, everybody's on the same page as, as far as that's concerned, and we will be having a conversation with him to see what the best path forward is for the school district and for the foundation and Mr. New.
Great, thank you.
And we'll report that back out, but thank you for asking about that, appreciate it. Um, any other new business? Okay. Um, presentation by the public on issues, and if you have something you'd like to say, now's the time.
Shane, I will be very, very familiar. I have a question about, the elementary schools, they have a field day, and every year, it's a big event, people look forward to it. And parents and grandparents and kids and all of us can sit up on top of the building and watch the kids in the state in field days. But this year, I was told that there's a security issues or something, parents are not allowed to attend, is that true?
I'd have to check into that.
Go ahead, you talk to her, because I don't know any.
I, I'd have to do some research on that.
Okay, because, I mean, if it's one of the parents that were not invited, and, you know, I don't really understand, I guess if the school doesn't know.
I'm not aware of anything at the board level, so, um, is there, is, is it, are you referring to the middle school, you're referring to all the elementary schools?
It's from, uh, for all elementary.
Got elementary school principal.
They're all here, right?
I mean, if anyone would like to comment on that? Any building principal?
What has been communicated?
Uh, we discussed it.
Could you come up to the microphone?
We had discussed it amongst each other, just deciding for security reasons, we weren't going to have parents come this year. It's very difficult to tell, um, who is a parent, who is a stranger, it's, it's just a security issue.
Is it just an issue in terms of access, I mean, uh, where do you normally hold this stuff?
Outside.
Outside, but where, is it at the middle school?
No.
No.
It's outside each building.
It's outside each individual building?
Correct.
Yes.
I have a question, what do you do with pa, uh, parents who volunteer?
We already have volunteers.
So you're volunteers, they're, okay.
And they would have clearances.
I think we have two or four volunteers per classroom.
Okay, so you don't, you don't clearances on that.
Well, the, 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 they're always separated from, like, you can sit on the top of the hill watching, down almost like a football game.
Yeah.
You know, probably, and the hill, we chose, and, and you look down, but it was only seven.
I think that was scheduled for.
What could trigger, or, uh, a, a security problem? It's really no difficulty going to a football game or going to a baseball game or any event in the school district.
Right. How many?
It's not like the parents need a rainbow of this thing, I mean, there's, it's completely separated, and it isn't really a big deal with, with the elementary kids, they're always with their parents and grandparents and moms.
Sure. Is there, is there, was there an issue, uh, with commingling of, of parents and students or something in the past that raised this concern?
I think the issue is that we just don't know who's there, I mean, anyone who'd come and be respected. Whereas if the parents are coming to our school, it's very secure, they come in the door, they sign, and we know who's in the building, and they're aware of visitors, that we, there's no way we could possibly do that out of doors, that's just.
Mr. Basil, in, in, speaking from Birdsboro, somebody from the neighborhood could walk down and walk right onto the field at Birdsboro. I mean, MEC and APC might not be, there's no houses, it's very close, but there are, but Birdsboro, you're literally in somebody's backyard, so therefore, their, I guess their concern would be anybody in the neighborhood could just walk over.
Would there be a way to just sort of tape off an area where parents would be designated to sit?
Again, uh, speaking from Birdsboro.
Let us take a look at it, I mean, at this point.
I mean, I can tell you that was, when I had, this was a big deal for the boy, I mean, she'd go watch, get to play, the games, everything else. It was, but, you know, again, I have to defer to building principals on it, and maybe there's some happy medium where, as you said, you could tape it off and, and watch or do something, because it is a, it is almost a write-up at the end of the year that they would do this, so.
Maybe rope off a section and have one of the security guard walk over.
Anybody outside of that roped-off area would be asked to.
I guess, again, I agree with Mr. Sheen, it's probably possible, I understand the building principals, but there is some safety concerns, especially, speaking at Birdsboro, there probably would be.
Well, if, if the administration can take a look at it, I think we owe it to the public to kind of explain to them what's going on and, and come up with a solution.
Especially with the little kids, the little kids don't like how their parents are.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you for bringing up Mr. Coughlin. Yep?
Yeah, we had to speak to the Birdsboro police, I know they'd be.
Yeah, they would be walking.
I would think so.
Yeah, we'd have to, yeah.
They're sitting there in the morning already modeling traffic.
Correct, correct, you'd probably do that.
Through that intersection, so.
Oops, my apologies. Thought I had that off. Um, okay, any other presentations by the public on issues?
Angela Snyder, uh, support for East Birdsboro. Um, actually, I just have kind of some questions, because I've heard some of the different things, and, um, and actually, I'm going to ask this prior to, and quite given. The sedexo issue, the sedexo thing, you all just approved the renewing equipment, the sedexo contract, then. Um, I'm kind of curious as to why, because I've been around for a number of years, and, um, I know that in the past, the school district basically ran cafeteria. And, um, the, we had a lot of experienced cafeteria managers who did an excellent job, um, who quality was great and everything, and then, then we got sedexo. And I was kind of wondering, why did we turn that over to a middleman? Because it seems to me, there are plenty of ways to increase revenue, but putting a middleman in there, kind of, you know, takes away some of the money that, that we could be getting. Um, and I was just, as an example, um, I had, I had heard that back with our previous superintendent, there was a year where the cafeteria ended the year with an eighty-three thousand dollar surplus. And they were told to put eighty thousand dollars into the general fund, and they started the next school year with three thousand dollars. And it worked, and I'm, I'm looking at the numbers, it's a hundred and six thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty, whatever dollars, for, that they guaranteed to give us every year. Is that, is that why it was, because it's like a guaranteed amount that sedexo will give us this amount of money? And then, of course, they have to pay cafeteria workers.
No.
No, no.
No, no.
Hold on, let, let, let her finish asking all the questions, and then we'll sum it up at the end. Go ahead.
I, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious as to why it doesn't benefit us to run it ourselves and take the money, the extra, and, you know, I suppose paying, basically.
Okay, I think I understand your question, you want to know why we're not doing it in-house as opposed to a third, hiring a third party, and what happens to the funds?
Right.
Okay, so we'll address that. Um, first, let me, let me start backwards and work forward. So, all the funds that are raised through, um, our proprietary services, in terms of the food, go back into our proprietary fund, which is used to pay salaries, benefits, all those things of the cafeteria workers. It's used for capital improvements, um, to the kitchens and things of that nature. None of those, none of those dollars come into our operating funds, or are used as part of our operating budget. Those all stay within our proprietary funds, okay? That's the first thing. So, any profits that are generated there go into that fund and are going to be used to continue to pay forward that operation. And if there's, you know, new ovens that need to be replaced, money's come out of that fund to replace those ovens, they don't come out of our capital reserve, they don't come out of our operating budget, they come out of that fund, provided there's money available from that fund. Okay, that's step one. Now, step two, my recollection was, I think I was new to the board when we switched over to sedexo.
I was also prior to you coming on the board, and we were here as long as I've been, and it was done, and it was easier, the, the third party being allowed to manage and guaranteeing us a profit. What you're talking about was part of the contract, eighty thousand way back then, it was seventy-seven at one time, that they would manage, but their, their, their economy of buy was much greater, or they could buy food for them than the day the school district could. So, and Marriott is, is, sedexo Marriott's huge, their goal, so they would be able to buy food at a much better rate than we could. They also had access to and understood the government surplus program where we were able to ask for, or pay for, to be able to be given government surplus products to use in our lunchroom, thereby, again, guaranteeing us, you know, the ability to turn a profit more than the school district did. So that's one of the reasons they entered into it, and on top of, as I said, guaranteeing us a profit that we then put into a fund to be able to replace our equipment, as it got old, you know, trays, silverware, whatever.
Kitchen.
And again, it's been at least eight years that I can think of, I'm not sure how long it's, but we've gone out several times to look at it, and, because we have to put this in periodically, and they're the only ones that, that were able to come close to matching the number we needed. And when we put together a number that we would need to do the same thing they did, it ended up being bored, and we couldn't make that.
I think the bottom line is, we're in the business of education, we're not in the business of restaurants and providing food and things of that nature, that's not our core competency, and I don't think it ever should be. Um, we need to hire those, those people that do that job well, and the benefit that the school district has been something that has been guaranteed, and it's been something we've been able to bank on going forward.
Okay, I kind of figured that it had to do with the guarantee, the fact that you know that you're going to get this amount of money or whatever, this, as you say, other fund, so it's not going into the general fund.
Correct.
It goes into a totally separate fund that only deals with improving the kitchens and replacing the trays and everything else.
Okay, thank you.
Very much.
Any other questions or presentations by the public? Yes, sir, please state your name and where you live.
Corbin Gina, three, six, four, most of the drive. Um, you mentioned that they are cutting the driver's head.
In, in the present budget, representative patients, yes.
And how much does that cost?
It's the cost of the teacher.
It's, it's a separate line, I don't think.
So, maybe if you all know that, um, higher activity, for example, driving, and obviously, uh, not everyone has the money to.
I'm sorry, could you speak up, sir?
Not everyone has the money to have to take those, uh, private driver licenses, a lot of times, uh, they don't have to, they don't have to help to, uh, safety and security as well as, uh, teaching, uh, kids.
My understanding, we don't provide the drive to road park, if you were going to do the actual road park representative education, you have to pay three hundred, three hundred fifty dollars, like, you to get the actual road, this is just a classroom.
The traffic safety instruction.
And, 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 there's no physical action problem, many students still do it with their parents and those that film, pay as a fee to the activity, so that has nothing to do with them. Ours is a classroom park.
Okay, okay. Um, Mr. Kurtz had, uh, opportunities, I know that it would just be that he's, uh, the, and, and, uh, the pay people to participate. Do we have any idea of what, um, the cost will increase?
No, the Revenue Enhancement Committee is still working on that, as a matter of fact, we just, um, uh, I think, some additional data that was needed from the administration is imminent, we, I would hope that we have it in the next day or two. And then we can use that to help formulate a more rational basis for, uh, the assignment of fees. So I, I think the goal would be that the Revenue Enhancement Committee would have a recommendation for the board, um, within the next week or two. Certainly by the committee of the whole.
The last question I have, was regarding the second program, so I guess at this point, it's still looking to cut the electric, uh, we have to set it around.
That's correct.
It's in the current balance sheet.
Now, we have to, so, if, if we can go and, uh, get sponsors, people who are willing to go and just contribute towards this, this, uh, program, can we, if we still want to pull our act to, maybe for people, if we need money for that? Is there a way, can you say we need a hundred fifty thousand dollars to, to save the program for the elementary? We can, uh, money being allocated toward that saving program?
I think that's absolutely correct, I mean, we had the same, uh, issue when we were looking at reducing from full-day kindergarten to half-day kindergarten, people came, the public, and said, look, if we can raise four hundred thousand dollars, uh, would you keep the, uh, full-day kindergarten? We said, absolutely we would, this is, this is a function of mon, of dollars, so if the public can go forward and find a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in, um, in funds to fund that particular program, then we would have that program for that year. But it'd be under the caveat that the funds would have to be available when the program starts, if it's not available, no program, and we can't, so you can't come to the table with fifty thousand dollars and we've committed ourselves to a, um, a hundred and seventy thousand dollar program, because the teachers have to be notified, I think sixty days prior to the school year starting, that that program will no longer be available, and so on and so forth, there's lots of different contractual obligations. So, the deadline for that, I think, would be June thirty, July first.
I would say, to add to that, we also, people don't realize it, but we also do build an elementary schedule, and the, the elementary band right now is a pull-out, and under the assumption that we're not going to have that, we're not going to have pull-out time for that to happen. So if that's going to happen, we would need to build that back into the elementary schedule, knowing that it would be coming, so, I, I, May, June at the latest. The, the time is of the essence.
Well, eh, eh, yeah, I mean, we have to pass that budget by, by, by the end of the year, so.
Correct.
Now, my understanding of that, if they, if you don't have the music, if you don't do the middle school, then you gotta have, you know, like, the kids that need to be placed in, it's a different, five students. then you're going to have, you're going to have kids that need to be placed in, in, in the classroom. And, uh, today, is it, how are we going to, how are we going to ensure that this is the area that's talked about?